The man of the year is back.
We haven't seen him in a few days.
Oh, it's good stuff. It's very well written.
I have that.
I'll be off the show when you snow, but you're off the show.
There you go, sir.
I like to talk at the duty door. Everybody will join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good to be back. I guess everybody, I'm out of the routine here. I couldn't remember how to do it. Let's present it to the number of the eight, two thousand eighteen, Ray Ramey. You have much to say, Mr. Ramey? Ramey made the motion and Mary seconded that. Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Public comment? We don't have anybody timed in down there. The pink sheet is all alone. So we'll go to the presentation, which Mr. Gosny is going to give us a maintenance update. Greg?
Yeah. A bit of a maintenance update. Couple things I need to talk about. One of the things that our sewer plants, we talked about our sewer plants in two years now, so it's happening, but we did have to do some change orders on the sewer plants. ADP is changing a lot of ways they're doing things now. They're very particular in they don't want a pole where they can't access it. A lot of liability to come on your property now. They make places in your grass. So what we had to do at Midway, we had to change it from, we originally was going to set a pole, come to the pole right there by the sewer plant. We called the location the pole. We had to change that where it all has to go underground now. So it has to go underground and come up into the pedestal. That is where it has to be set at. So we had to make that change and then we changed it to a hundred ampound panel and then breakers and things like that. And I went on and added LED lights at the location to go lighting. It was in plans for that. At Duval, the same day we ran a little bit of Duval, knocked to that extreme. The location of where they wanted the pole, we thought we wanted the pole outside sewer plant where they could read meters. They wanted the pole, so we had to relocate the new pole inside the sewer plant at Duval. So during that, the two changes at Midway was a five thousand and eighty-five dollar change and a Duval was a three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar change and then total was eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. And we have a contingency fund. It's tight. This project, probably one of the tightest projects I've seen, we're really close on minus on this. Our contingency fund on that was twenty-six thousand, three oh seven. After we'd done the change order, we're left with seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars for any other expenses that we incur.
Unexpected expenses, right?
Yeah. It's just something out of the norm that we didn't plan on. So the road and all that, don't see a problem with anything else. It's just ADP, I know the baseball field over there, we've been around and around with ADP on that. We finally worked it out. They finally have power down here, so that's a good thing, winter time. That's just an update on what's going on with the sewer plants right now. I don't foresee anything else coming up. They did bring up in the construction meeting about putting new fence around Duval area. It requires a fence around it. In the bid, it required that you put the old fence back up. I did let them know that I would evaluate the cost if they want to put a new fence up. We have the fencing we can get, but it's not to put the old fence back up. It'd be minimal on that. That's all I may not foresee happening, this fence. But we added LED lights also at Duval to allow lighting, which wasn't in the bid to start with. That's a little bit on that. The good part is Midway is this month, December, month of December, they're going to start the access road, start putting access road in. And talking with them, the fabrication for the plant itself for Midway is due to be completed by the end of December. So we're projecting for Midway to go online at the end of February. Hopefully, weather permitting, I would like to get that done so we get the playground back in shape whenever it's raining. That's a little bit on the line there. Some of the things we've been doing, the gym floors, we've downed one more gym. A little later, seeing them on the plane, we'll have a lot on with mowing season to get everybody into the do. We went, I went with a new product this year. It takes an additional process to begin with. The other product we had just went outrageously high, so we went with this product. And we're really pleased with this product. I tried it last year at Hamlin. It was a new product. To see how it held up. It held up a lot better than a sports cup we've been using before. So we were really questioning whether we need to do Hamlin or just buff it out. It's a really good product, so. That, we have Duval, we'll be down with the gym floors. I did meet last week with R.M. Huffman, that's kind of in Charleston, at the gym floors and things like that. We went to Guy Valley and getting pricing on Guy Valley Gym Floor. We're looking at the bleachers there also. That school originally was set up for a high school. So we're coming down to middle school, take two rows of bleachers off. Still have the rise into where it's up high. It would allow four feet in on the outbound where you can put chairs and things like that. Kind of separates your sports teams away from the bleacher area. So looking at that, that's going to be a pretty good cost to take those three out, not have to put in the bigger bleachers. That'll allow seating for seven hundred and fifty people if we go that route.
Great. Will it be on both sides of the gym?
Yes, it will be on both sides. I know there's some things going on there.
Oh, yeah.
That was nothing that, we have to put on both sides. They require the SBA to want it to have to be on both sides. So it'll be on both sides. I've heard all kinds of, believe me, it's.
And Greg, there isn't a comp frame to do this, is there?
I would like to do it as soon as school's out.
Okay.
Based on how it comes in. And what I'm doing right now, I'm just putting a filler out there. I want to know where are we at with this before we get it out. Right? I'm just going out and I'm saying here, now I'm looking at a number two grade maple. A number two grade rather than a number one, it's totally clear. Number two grade to me is a lot prettier wood than a number one. You got a little bit of bark on it, a little bit of, and the other one is just so clear, it just looks like tile. I mean, it kind of gives it a really good look when I looked at it. What we're looking at, what I'm doing is getting pricing. And we're looking at turnkey job. If they just come in and do it all, replace the bleachers, replace the flooring, take old flooring out, get rid of all that. Then I could put an alternate in there to where I'm looking at, if we come in and take the flooring out, we dispose of the bleachers, move all that out, and all they do is come in and put the new floor in. Trying to get the best price we can get, doing what we can to save money. But that floor is so bad, it's really, when they were doing the, finishing the floor, I just told them, pull the bleachers out past the rotten spot and do that and then push them back in. It's just so bad. Now, my concern with that floor is that we got floor, roof drains coming down to the floor on both sides. In that area and in that exit on the back, I think that door is leaking water from the brick running inside. So I'm going to put a little small awning there just to block that. But once we get it out, we've got to investigate, is that drain on this side leaking and this side leaking? Calls in water tips toward under there. Just so that we may have to look at rerouting these drains down on the roof or out the back side towards back of the roof side.
Yeah, and that was going to be my question. We have the new roof on the school. The drains appear to be functioning properly now.
Yes.
But you're going to do some more investigation into that before we spend a lot of money on a floor and bleachers and make sure we don't have water running under that. It's going to ruin this new product.
My question, what I'm concerned with on the far side by where the, I think Jack, it's hot in here.
Yes, it's hot.
On the far side of where the coaches rooms are, the dressing rooms are, that floor you got a larger than that floor, it's just, it's wrong. We replaced it once. Right on that wall, you have a big five inch drain that comes down, goes through the floor and I guess, plans are so old, I'm trying to find something, I think to go into the sewer from the floor. So where they go down there, they're in a T with the cleanout and it's a cast iron pot. If you ever went around cast iron pots, when they get old and break and different things. I'm thinking that right where it goes to the floor is where we're having the issue with it broken. And then we have water that comes out. But we're going to investigate that before we, and I've already talked to them, you know, give us time to investigate and make changes. We have to.
Well, isn't that in the same area where the sidewalk collapsed, for lack of a better term?
Yes, it is. Right out back between the football field and the football dressing room. That's the same area. So my thinking is that we've got, either that drain has collapsed or it's to the point where it's deteriorated, where it's leaking. But if we have to, we look at, I could come out on the top side and bring it out the top and let it go over the chine. So we could come out that way, then on the back side, we could go through the wall, take it out that way before we take it back down into a drain. But we'll eliminate that problem before we do that.
Well, I mean, and that's the concern I have is we have these drains that run under the building. There's no way to inspect those drains.
No.
You have to, your inspection is to determine what's happening on the ends of them. And they're how old?
Those were nineteen sixty-eight, something like that, or something like, maybe up there. Like, I don't know, sixty-eight, something like that. I can find out more about that. Cast iron, you don't go long with the cast iron.
Well, at least plastic or polyurethane.
Plastic, and you no longer have, and a lot of those joints are lead joints. So you put a T in there, you put a lead joint, you use a rubber boot and things like that now. But that's where we're at on that. I want to see where that's coming. I'd like to get that project going. I even talked to the principal about two weeks before school's out, maybe starting on it and starting it out and getting it all done.
Well, you just throw this out there. How hard would it be for you to estimate the cost to replace the drain system? Because I know there have been a lot of problems with the drainings there. And what I don't want to happen is us do all this work, have everything working properly, and then have a fifty, sixty-year-old cast iron pipe that breaks under the gym.
Right.
And we have to go in and undo something that we've done. I mean, how, how big a job would it be to just reroute and put in all new drains?
I would like to do that. If, once we look at this, if I can find out where we can tie it to them on the outside, it's not going to be a big of a deal. Now, we may have to leave some inside. I'm not saying we're going to go up on a roof and tear the roof out and do all new drains.
Right.
I'm just saying our plumbing would be against the wall out and down and back away from. So we take all that out of the building. I think that's feasible to do that. I think you're looking at maybe about six thousand dollars to do that. If we do it.
Well, I mean, to me, something in that range, what Carol just said is, it truly is, there's no question that we have to look at doing that because the reality is the facilities we have are the facilities we're going to have.
And we've had this issue with water for several years. I know years ago, when I was in the booth, we'd done the floors ourselves. Deuce had done the floors.
Right.
And it was always issue with water in that area.
Right.
So that's leaving me think, we've got something that's compromised in there.
Right.
We could eliminate that and we're going to put in, this total project, I'm hoping I can come in, bleachers all a little bit above a hundred thousand. But if we can do that and eliminate that and then do with and all, we should be in good shape for several years.
Yeah.
I always like eliminating problems that you can foresee happening. And that's a problem. They're old and they're outdated. They just need to be replaced.
Right. I mean, particularly in conjunction with a project of this scale. It doesn't make sense to jeopardize a hundred thousand on a project by not taking four, five, six thousand or broke up in a major.
That's, you know, and that's definitely, and even if I don't, if I go over there and I pull this up and it's all totally dry, I still don't feel good about that. What we talked about, we take the cleanout out, push water through it, but even that's not going to tell me a whole lot until you get a full volley of water through that. It may not be leaking until the pipes start coming back up and then it's seeping out. So, you know, if I can look at just replacing it all and do some plumbing on the outside, take it outside the building and then turn it back in to the sewer drain out there, eliminate your problem. That's a little bit of what we've been doing, what I'm looking at on there. And just to give you an idea of where we're headed, if we can get, I'd like to get Guy Valleys done and straightened up. New bleachers, total bleachers on both sides of the thing. Now, the principal did ask me about putting in a full court volleyball net down in the concrete. I said, we can explore that when we get it out. We can do the inserts and then you can have a volleyball court in there and not have to use the stand-up one to follow over and stuff like that. We'll explore that when we tear it out. Then the next one was going to be, I'd like to do next, do Hamlins and then Duval. Those are the, kind of the priority that they're bad is Guy Valleys is the worst.
It's rotten at Guy Valley. Hamlin's floor is paper thin and Duval's is almost as old, right?
Duval's got the hell popping up with it. Can't keep it down.
And then Greg, now all three of the other, is it complete reparation here too? I mean, all the floor, the bleachers, bleachers, the whole mine yards?
Uh, that's, let's see, that's, again, that's the thing we've been doing. And then, like I said, the tire, we've got all tires, we have the baseball sewer plants. We're still renovating somewhat, LED lighting, we're continually to do away with all this older stuff. Lighting is, away with it. I have one more thing I'd like to address with the board is, we have a truck that's bought two thousand and eight. I've been in front with Mr. Dyer and he's given me information about it. And it's the truck that, one of the service techs that Jimmy loved on it. It's a bigger truck that's set up with a vice and saws and stuff installed in it. It's our main truck. This truck, it only has sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seven miles on it. This truck is, it's in a shop all the time. It's been here a month now. So we're trying to make do, his tools are in that truck. We have another truck. So we're trying to make do with our other trucks we have to keep, to keep things up. But this truck is shot, basically, like Mr. Dyer said. We had last year nine hundred dollars we put in there for three fuel injectors. That's had six fuel injectors already put in it. Two torque converters and a transmission put in it for five hundred and sixty-five dollars each. Right now, it's over there, they don't know why the oil is coming into the engine. So they're putting in, he calls them, I don't know what they are, they're sand pipes, oil seals or something that's in the engine for a diesel engine. But they're still exploring why. We don't even know when we're going to get a back or what all that has to be done. And a high-pressure pump has to get solved for two thousand dollars. Since it's been in the shop for at least two months since last year, off and on for the shop for two months. Now they're telling me that this, they can't guarantee that it's going to last and they won't continue that process. Every four to five thousand miles, you're looking at putting in new fuel injectors, you know, just to keep it running. Corey and Mr. Dyer, to replace the engine, it's between seventeen thousand and eighteen thousand dollars for an engine.
Who's doing the work on the truck?
Uh, that was Caldwell Trucking in Hurry. That's where they take their stuff back.
It's what kind of truck? Ford diesel?
It's a Ford diesel, yeah.
Six liter engine?
It's a six, like a six-cylinder engine, yeah.
No, is it a six-liter V-eight diesel?
It's, it's a V-six diesel.
Okay. Probably a Caterpillar diesel, then.
And it's an, it's an international-made engine.
Okay.
I don't know, like, I don't know much about the engine, that's my information. But he said it's a, it's a V-eight that they took two cylinders off of and it's old. An international-made for Ford there for some reason. Now they don't even make them for Ford because they had a fall out. I don't know. But that's, that's where we're at with that. Now, what I've looked at is, it has a big utility bed on, we looked at. If we were to go eighteen thousand dollars, put eighteen thousand dollars in the engine in that truck, we can buy a new Ford F-350 chassis with a new gasoline engine, not a diesel. And it's twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars for, off of the state contract. Corey and Mr. Dyer, we can take the bed off of this truck we got and just put it on the new chassis on the bed so we wouldn't be out the chassis on that. So we'd be out twenty-seven thousand dollars for a new truck. I just want to throw this out here to the board because I don't see myself, if we're going to continue to put seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars in a vehicle and you put another ten more to it, you've got a new truck. And that's where we're headed with this vehicle, Corey and Mr. Dyer.
Does the old truck have any resale value?
It would have to be auctioned, right?
Yeah, we'd have to auction it. They talk, I know they talked at the bus garage head, maybe we could use it around here for small things if they could get it running. It's where we don't have a shop with them. And I don't see no sense of putting money in something that continues to cost them money.
I think the last time I saw it, it was on the record, believe me, yeah.
I told him, I said, that truck stays more in the shop than I see it on the road. Isn't it, it hurts us when we, we have a lot of art material that's on the truck. That's our primary truck. You mean, you know, this is, he does a lot of carpeting and all the things we do. And we've kind of installed everything in that truck where generators, stuff, he can do things out, not have to come in here to use saws and things like that.
We have the thing there to make the purchase.
Everybody kind of agreeable with Mr. Gosny's job?
I think we can, we can wait and see, but I just give you a heads up to, this is something.
I think we feel like you should go and do anything best.
It's been over for a month now, this last time. And of course, you know, the guy, they were all flat waiting for Thanksgiving. I understand that. But it's getting to the point where it's affecting our ability to do the things we want to do. That's all I have.
About any questions about any particular school or anything?
I have a question. When's the new phone system going in at Midway? Do you know?
At Midway, I know it's out for bid. We did get a bid. I know the equipment is coming in right now. And I, when I talked to Ms. Early and I talked to her about doing Midway first.
Okay.
And so we're just a matter of a few more other things coming in. It's, it's real close. Everything's been bidded. It's already been awarded. We're just starting to get all the equipment in now.
Let me ask you a specific question, and this may be too specific for you to answer. But with this system, they have a key pad entry, or a key card entry system at Midway, correct?
Yes.
And if someone wants in the building, they have to be buzzed in?
Or have a key card.
Have a key card. Let's assume you don't have a key card. You've got to be buzzed in by someone from the main office. Is that right?
Correct.
Will this new phone system interconnect with the entry system in terms of if there isn't someone available in the office? Would the new phone system page them? Can it be set up to do something like that?
That would be a question for the gentleman that helps, Michael Boucher. He's the one who oversistered, I think. I know with the info center that's built into the intercom system, there's a lot of features in the info center that uses it up across the internet. And that would be a question we could, we could pose to them. I couldn't answer that true, dead and for sure right now.
Okay.
That's, that's the thing, is that we want to do Midway and then Hamlin will be the last one.
Talk to me later about that truck. I know someone's really, really good with heavy-duty diesels. And a lot of the things you've told me don't make sense, but a little bit I know about diesel. So, anyway.
Okay. You may have any questions about, for Greg, about any other project or anything else going on? The soccer field work, we, any specs together yet or?
Uh, I think Mr. Ellis has been working on those for, putting out to be a thing like that.
Get something out there early.
Yeah, I think he'll be here. He'll be here.
I thought he was, I don't know what I thought.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's, we don't have any other presentations or reports today, so let's go to the administrative section. You have a motion?
I don't.
Second.
Okay, Carol made the motion and Riley seconded that. Mr. Mickey?
Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus shaft runs for athletic events, academic competitions or school outings and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B is a one-year extension to the agreement with Armstrong Utilities Incorporated for the provision of service of fiber network for Harts EKA, Ranger Elementary, Guy Valley Middle School and West Hamilton Elementary according to the terms of the agreement. Item C is a one-year extension to the con, or to the agreement with Frontier for the provision of service outlined in our prior contract. Item D is an agreement with Dorothy Fraser to provide transportation for a student to Guy Valley Middle School for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year according to the terms of the agreement. E, an agreement with Tina Short to provide transportation for a student to West Hamilton Elementary School for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year according to the terms of the agreement. F, approval to post a TIS, Technology Integration Specialist Position itinerary for Harts, Ranger, West Hamilton and Duval and that's funded through our CSI funds, Comprehensive Schools Agreement.
Okay, you may have any questions? If not, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Yes. All yes. Okay, finance section. You have much, please?
I don't know.
Mr. Wilkerson and Mr. Curry seconded that. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
You thought it was tonight, didn't you? I was working on Chris, I forgot.
Mr. Ellis, you're on, you're up.
Right now.
You're not even on deck. You're up.
Oh, man.
You didn't get any warm-ups when you just started, buddy.
Okay, scheduled invoices totaling one million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and eighty cents, which is a patch for the county pension for the following retired employees to pay from the excess levy fund.
Spending a lot of money this time, Ray.
Well, we try. Try to pay dues.
Catching up, aren't we, after the holidays? Okay, everybody's had the opportunity to look at those. I don't guess you had any questions or anything you wanted to contact. Is that an all yes vote on the finance?
Yeah.
Uh, as good as personnel, has that much, please? Move, second, Fred, second.
Item A, transfer of professional personnel. Item B, employment of substitute service personnel. Item C, employment of service personnel. Item D, transfer of service personnel. Item E, employment of extracurricular personnel. F, retirement and resignations. And under that, we need to abolish a posting we had at Hamlin. We need to post that as multi cats that just severe disabilities. Also, we need to abolish the following service personnel, no, service positions because we got ahead of ourselves there a little bit, which is a SHR nineteen thirty-five, HR nineteen thirty-six, SHM nineteen thirty-seven, STD nineteen forty and STD nineteen forty-one. We got a little ahead of ourselves in posters. That was ahead of time, we showed.
Okay, all those just did by specific positions, right?
No, they were identified by specific service personnel positions. And people did apply for them and we let them know that they don't need to reapply. It'll just, they're, it'll just carry forward to the next posting.
All right. Anybody have any personnel questions? If not, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Yes. All yes on the personnel scale. Okay, we're down to comments concerned. Four members, no? The other one, what, Mr. Mickey? Anybody have anything? Let's don't let it go yet. Just one thing, the, our ESC, Mountain State ESC, will meet here in December. And it's on December the twelfth at ten o'clock. As you know, our office now is in Dunbar. We go to each county throughout the year. We do it with RISA. And after Mickey, Mr. Mickey appeared, he had, when they put out the schedule back in July, they had the, the December meeting was somewhere else other than here in Lincoln County. But the other, some of the other members, not from our county, but they were saying, I thought we had that December meeting in Hamlin. And then, so they changed it around. The reason they do that, they like to have the December luncheon in Hamlin. In Lincoln County. So they changed it around. You didn't realize, I don't want to lose Dale or somebody that was saying, we have that meeting out there in Hamlin, not where I, like, in other words, these people like, they think they get a good meal here. But all I'm just.
Well, they've heard about Lembel's cooking.
We've not brought that to your attention yet. They couldn't stop it. But just to let you know, we will have that and everybody's welcome to attend. It'll be, we'll have our meeting, it'll be in the. it'll be in the, uh, technology room, right?
Yes.
And then I guess we'll have our lunch in there after, which is basically.
Eleven thirty probably, lunch.
Something like that, unless a couple of them get a little along the wind. Okay, so that's all I have, okay, yeah.
Uh, ERIT is a federal program for reimbursement for schools and libraries and their expenses that they have associated with telecommunications and internet. I know you've probably in past presentations with Mr. Bailey, or with John Atkins, and now we have Andy in that position. You'll talk about it, Ray, and how important it is to our county, our school district in terms of the funding we receive. Well, now that Mrs. Early is in this position, this is all new to her. And as a matter of fact, today, the next two days, she's in Fairmont, receiving training on ERIT. But it, it won't even scratch or touch the surface of the complexities of those forms and all that goes into making sure that it's accurate and, and we're maximizing the reimbursement we receive. I say that because she has come to me with a request, that Danny Daly be able to help her about, for about five days. Because this, this happens right after the first of the year, this process. He did the same for, uh, John, John was hired. Uh, but it would be his day, Ray, for five days, as he was, as needed, to help or assist Angie in putting together our, uh, our application. So, and I want to talk to Danny, give us, thank you.
Would this be in a specific timeframe?
Some would be after the first of the year.
I mean, but it would conclude by April or?
June, if the latest, I mean, we could, like, the concrete.
Well, I just, depending on what you have to have, depending on the time.
So he asked me to five days.
I'm assuming that, uh, the amount of reimbursement would exceed greatly the amount that your salary would be, so.
Well, it seems to me that missing one little tiny component of it would eclipse, that the, the loss from that would eclipse the cost of having Danny come in there for a few days.
It's, it's, it's a bear, as a matter of fact, one of the forms is a bear form, that's what I'm talking about. Angie's had to train, and it's four hundred and sixty-three slides, she has to look at most. You've ever been in a presentation, four hundred and sixty-three slides. It's spread. I know when Johnny came back, the three days, a year and a half, Governor was there, he was just overwhelmed with all the information. Anyway, Mrs. Early, she don't really did it, she had things, uh, to handle.
All right, anything else, that's all I have. All right, no one else has anything else, let's adjourn until Tuesday, December the fourth, two thousand eighteen, six o'clock here at Hamlin, six o'clock in Hamlin, Mr. Ellis. You have a motion please? Rowdy?
Second.
Take it by Larry Byhanger. All yes?
Yes.